September 12th, 4:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any today?
Yes, we have two. We'll start off with John Cullen.
Come on up, John. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, our work commission, our mayor, our city manager. I'm here today to request something that came on short time notice, and I appreciate your consideration of this. Last year, the Chautauqua ethic, who I hope everybody enjoyed the Labor Day fireworks display, used that Bob Daddy concert on Friday evening at the car show to raise money for fireworks. And they had a beer garden, and they'd like to do the same this year, but they didn't let me know they would like to do that until Friday afternoon, which is a very short timeframe in terms of getting all the permits that we need. Now, I have plenty of time with ABC, but I'm going to need some flexibility of the city commission. And this is a group of community citizens that works hard, put on this display, and doesn't necessarily understand the timeframes that we work under. So I really appreciate your consideration of this resolution. Both Ms. Landis and the honorable Finch have helped draft the resolution that we need passed. I'm going to be on the agenda here in just a second, asking you for the same resolution or similar resolution for Ladies Night Out. But I would appreciate if you could set me aside and maybe consider that this evening for Friday evening of this week, take place in Forest Park, in the parking lot, at the Bob Daddy concert, and that's my request.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for John about his request? John, you said this is a fundraiser that the Chautauquais use this for?
They do. They use this money to raise money to purchase fireworks for the 2023 show.
Do you know roughly what they made last year that went to the show this year?
From the, from this beer garden, it was roughly five or $600.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any, do you have any concerns or anything like that? Do you want to go ahead and?
I move that we approve the, or the, the authorizing sale of alcohol beverages. As per, yeah, the resolution, as per discussed by Mr. Cullen.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I really appreciate that. I want to tell the five commissioners how much I appreciate the city manager, Ms. Landis, and honorable Finch for helping bring this about in such a quick fashion. Oh, am I supposed to do, okay.
It's Melissa. You're totally fine.
I just appreciate the relationship that we have with the Chamber of Commerce.
I was going to ask if you can go anywhere.
No. Thank you, John. We're going to, we'll call you right back up in a second. You said we had a second?
Thank you. Elizabeth Brewer.
Come on up. Please state your name for, for the record, please.
Elizabeth Brewer.
Thank you. Why can't we help you this afternoon?
Thank you for listening to me. It's my first time ever in one of these things. I moved to Ottawa two years ago. I live at the old dentist office, right across the road street from City Park. I have two children, three and five, and we frequent City Park. As I understand it, there's kind of an old playground and a new playground. The new playground actually doesn't have any benches or picnic tables or anything to, to sit and supervise my children. The old park does, but it doesn't have near as many fun things to do. So I would like to have park benches built, possibly a shade structure because it is in full sun all day. The other one is shaded. It has much older trees. I know we're not going to be able to get old trees over there, but places in California and in Park have canvas structures to shade, if that's a possibility. I will be out on Main Street for the car show that's coming up. Looking for me to get petitions for other parents who feel similar to me to show that this is something that we all want, or to do fundraising for the budget, if there's not one, or such structures. I don't really know where to go from here.
Well, certainly, any, any help that you have with the petitions and additional names would be wonderful. So that would be great. I don't know. Dennis, do we have anything that we've discussed about putting park benches there?
I don't know that it's been discussed, and I think we're going to have another discussion here in a little bit that might or could impact what we're talking about there. I have it in my notes, and you're all being listened to, and we'll see what we can, what we can come up with, yes.
From what I've gathered, there is a budget for replacing benches, but I don't know if there's one for new benches. That can be allocated, or if you do need fundraising for it.
Well, and I think, you know, honestly, the biggest thing is just bringing it to our attention because, you know, not all of us are, have kids who play there anymore, or, you know, anything like that. But so just knowing about the problem is, is the biggest first step. So now, you know, we can definitely take some action on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the process.
Also, do any of you have, are any of you on the Facebook Ottawa Kansas News Group?
Yes. I am not, no.
Besides just talking about cable and internet adages, there are a lot of people who discuss different city requests and that kind of thing. I didn't know if you wanted to kind of get in on that and see what people of Ottawa are saying.
I promise you, we see them.
Well, then you may have seen me already.
We appreciate you being here, present, and having that conversation with us face to face, but thank you so much.
Absolutely. As Commissioner Kayler said, that's, it's something we see all the time online, and this is, is way more meaningful for somebody to come and sit in front of us. We appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, thank you. I'll move us on to items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which is our minutes from our August 22nd study session. Commissioners, did you have a chance to look that over? Are there any corrections? If not, would you be okay moving that on to a regular agenda?
Yep.
Okay, that's what we do. Thank you. Move on to items for presentation and discussion. The first one is a resolution authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor and enhanced cereal malt beverages at Ladies Night. John, come back on. Welcome back.
And all greetings extended. Everything still planned. I should have acknowledged Commissioner Graves, your recent surgery and the fact that you've been unable to attend except by Zoom, and glad you're back seated here on the, amongst the commissioners this evening. Ladies Night Out is an annual tradition in downtown Ottawa, and I first want to make sure that you all feel properly invited to attend and participate in that, and welcome too. But it allows for the serving of adult beverages as refreshments at the business establishments who participate at Ladies Night Out. We have a number of home businesses that are actually providing booths at Legacy Square. That's a separate application, and that process has gone forward. But because the businesses are on Main Street, that requires a separate resolution that I can take forward to ABC for approval of this. And that being said, all alcohol laws apply. Nothing can be served to minors. The businesses that provide adult beverages are responsible for that. Nothing is allowed on the streets. It all takes place inside. Right now, we have approximately 30 Denver's and businesses that are participating in this. It's always a big night. Well, it's a big afternoon, actually. It's been changed from the original kind of four o'clock, eight o'clock, to one o'clock, seven o'clock, and it seems like that's been very popular. T-shirts have been added. It continues to change and grow. And so anyway, I'm asking for the same resolution that I asked previously to be approved for Ladies Night Out, which is October 7th, and is annually the first Friday in October, and always a popular event. And we expect anywhere from five to 600 participants to that.
Commissioners, any questions?
I'd make the motion to approve item number one, resolution authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor and enhanced cereal malt beverages for Ladies Night Out.
I would second.
All right. Motion is second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is approved.
And I greatly appreciate the partnership we have with the city commission. It's very valuable to us, and let us know anything, anytime that we can do to help you out.
John, you have anything else?
Yeah.
Could we get?
On to item two. John, thank you. We appreciate what the chamber does for our community, too. Item two is a splash pad discussion with Casey Coleman. Good afternoon, Casey.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. How's everybody doing?
Good.
All right. So Richard and Dennis in ORC asked me to come speak to the commission about potential of a splash pad for the city of Ottawa.
And what I might tell you is what background is that we've been working, when we, I mean, Dennis and his people, my office and Levi have been working with Casey probably for over about a year on this project, right?
So what Richard has asked us to talk to the commission about is kind of the process, what goes into it, what the next steps are, and, you know, how you get from point A to point B. So one thing is, you know, splash pads are kind of up and coming. A lot of communities are doing them that can't, that don't want to build a totally separate aquatic center, or they have an aquatic center in one place, and there's an area that needs to be served somewhere else that might, you know, that splash pad can do. So what typically happens is with splash pad is, community engagement is going to be a big thing, because what everybody in this room might think it might be a good place for it, when you start talking to the users, that might not be the best place. So one thing that Richard's already shared with us is a heat map of where some of the students are for USD 290 in the city, because the, a splash pad is going to be geared towards that grade school, middle school type age group. And so if the, if the, where that population is, you want it something that's easy, accessible, that a lot of times that, you know, kids that ride their bikes to it, you know, a safe place, things like that. So a big step in this is community engagement. Once you kind of go through that community engagement process, identify some areas, work with Levi's team of what, you know, research they've done, try to figure out what type of features would be on a splash pad. Typically, you know, you might have four to five features. When you say a feature, it's something more than just like a fountain coming up through the ground. It might be like some, well, you see some of the flowers that are like real tall that have different, or a bucket that fills up and spills over, and kind of identify it that way. So the design process, where I come in is, you know, when you still have the site civil, just like any other development, grading sidewalks, how you get utilities to it, we would have a subconsultant help us with the actual pump design and features design. But just like with any other playground, you would kind of set a list of, these are the types of features we want. There are suppliers local, as in the Kansas City Metro, that actually supply those. They would bid on it of what features they can provide for what price that would go in, and then a contractor would bid on it with something of, you're ordering this type, these products to install. So it's more of, it's kind of a catalog, but that they're going to use. So you're not, we're not designing one-off type features to make it the most cost-effective way possible. The other part of this, and this is the big questions can kind of be in the weeds, but that we'll work through during the design process is a recirculating system versus a freshwater system. I don't know how much Richard has shared through, but a recirculating system is pretty much like a pool, has a pump, it's treated with chemicals, and you're not, you don't have water out flowing anywhere until you drain it or anything like that. A freshwater system, you are not treating the water. It is just, just like you're drinking water, but it can't, it still has to run to your sewer, because once it hits people, it's considered, it's considered wastewater. So you'd still have to tie it into your sewer, but you can, you have divergent areas that collect it stormwater. You still keep your stormwater separate from your wastewater on that area. The research that we've done and talking also with our subconsultant about it is, in this area, freshwater system is more than acceptable. If you get further west, where they rely heavily on aquifers, rainwater, typically things like that, it, they, they look at a lot more recirculating systems. When you look at the costs, the upfront cost for recirculating system is much more than the freshwater system, because you have pumps, chemicals, things like that. And then you have maintenance costs. Your circulating system is, maintenance is a little bit cheaper because you're not buying water. The city does own the sewer and water, but they still have to pay for treating it and, you know, sending it there. So those things would all be analyzed during the design process. Those are decisions we're going to make right now, because it's also meeting with Dennis' staff, Levi's staff, of who's, you know, the maintenance side of it, of what works best. Because a big thing with this is we don't want to add something that's going to take man-hours, that we have to go out and hire somebody or something to maintain. I think what it, what the city's trying to do is find something that can be maintained with the, with the staffing that they have to keep so that they're not having to change their budgets and everything like that to handle it. The other thing with it, some people ask is like, how does it run? You know, is it on, you know, sunup to sundown? It has a push button, what it is, and it's usually part of the design. It's, you know, fun for a child to hit, and it'll stay on for like three or four minutes. And they just push that button, and it keeps on. So it's only actually using water when it's there. So there's a lot of things that will go into the design of it, of do we put a fence around it? Do we, you know, what, you know, what types of things like that?
Benches.
Do benches go? I mean, because a lot of, a lot of people that go there do have small children, or parents don't want to play in a splash pad, they want to sit there, so, type of thing. So that's all that would kind of go into consideration. So I think what Richard was asking for is, the next step for us is entering into an agreement with the city to do the design work, do the public information side of it, collect that data, and then put that into a final design. That would be, so it's more of a design bid build.
So will you please walk the commission through the public participation, what you do during the public participation?
Um, so there's a lot of different ways to do this from, we call them design shreds. There can be an actual formal one, where we send out a public invite posted on social media, go to a meeting and just have an open house of what, I was talking with Levi about, we've done in other places, is you might have a board with like 20 different features on it, and give adults a green dot and kids a red dot, and let them just put a dot on what they want to see. And then you can see real quick of like what kids want versus what adults want, and then you, you kind of take that, but you just don't, you try to collect data from multiple sources and just not one area, and so that it is a community-type decision. But what also goes into these decisions of really trying to get through the, the public information part is, everybody always has an idea where it goes. We have to look at utilities, how you get water to it, how you get sewer to it, all that type of thing. You know, is it in a very covered area with trees, and it's in shade all the time? You know, is that, is that the best type? So, but the public engagement is very big. We've also done, you can do social media surveys, whether it's Twitter, Instagram, things like that, that might, can be sent out to students. You have to, what we have found, everybody understands, you have to, if you do want students' input, you have to go at it completely different than what, you know, doing an open house forum and inviting, inviting them to it on like a Tuesday or Thursday night, chances are they're not going to show up. So, but engaging is something they can just click on it, it takes 30 seconds out of their day, and click on it, you, you'll actually get input back. So it will be working with Levi, where they get a lot of foot traffic to come through there. So if we can do something at the ORC building, or even something, if we could work with the school district, work with Dr. Cobb's, if they would allow us to put a survey or something at the front door with a QR code or something that kids can just scan with their phones like at the middle school, and it takes a survey with some pictures, and they just click on what they like. So there's a lot of different options there, but I think what, you know, we're talking about is, I, I believe the city wants to get, it's just, this isn't going to be just the commission's decision, or just adults' decision, but the users' help of input of it. And I think that once you get that buy-in, you definitely get, you, kids wanting to use it, you know, and they get to see their ideas, you know, get built. Questions along that?
So the first location, that'd be something also, we would poll people as far as a preferred location, subject to?
Potentially, and I think that we do what we've done with the city with all sorts of different projects and other places, is kind of have a matrix of kind of weighted, what's most important, well, cost is a big thing, so just who owns the land? So is land ready to available utilities? Is there sewer and water main close that we could tie into? You know, those types of things of, I think, you know, the first one's going to be what property is available with that, and then comes utilities. So wait, just weighing those out of, but if there's a prime spot that is in, you know, has access, whether it is foot traffic from schools, I mean, schools really aren't used in the summer, but if it's, whether it's a highly foot traffic for students, or close to the bike trail, you know, what, what's that, do we want to put it right next to the swimming pool? Probably not from the standpoint of, that's already, that's covered that area. So, you know, how far from the swimming pools should it be? And I think that, you know, Levi has a lot of numbers of who uses what during the summer, and so we can kind of look at, well, are we polling kids already to different camps, different places that makes sense that, you know, they already have easy access to, so.
Casey, in, in 2006, improvements were made to the Ottawa Pool and added amenities to the pool, and I wasn't around, you weren't around, not, it was part of that process. You may be a part of the process to vote, and I may have been a part of the process to vote. Some, all of us here may have been a process to vote. But I loved that process because, and I, and I don't think it was perfect by any means, but I loved the process because we did listen to the population. And I do think that that's a critical part of it. I know that I've had a conversation, I, I think it's fifth grade, only because I've talked to Levi's wife about it, about civics, and I, they have a conversation about civics in fifth grade, and I do think it would be good if we could empower our fifth graders and others in the school to know that their vote does count, and we could utilize that by polling those kids, listening to those kids, voting with those kids within the school. So I do think that there's a component there that we could marry them together so that they know that their vote counts, and their voice is heard, and because they voted, because their voice was heard, then look what happens. So them seeing the whole process. And so I am in favor of bringing in as many littler voices, if you want to say it, younger voices, that we can, because I do think it is a critical piece of them seeing and seeing how their community and how their government works. So, yes.
So, so I think another component of this is that I know a couple of you have been contacted by some people interested in donating, but you need a project to really start solidifying that. So I will be negotiating a contract with, with Casey and with Casey's firm, so we can get started on this. And I'm relatively confident that Casey can get you all through this, and you can have one of these operating by the beginning of the next summer season.
Levi, is there anything you'd like to add?
Casey's well spoken, so. That's everything I have.
That's it?
Have you done one of these before, Casey?
Um, yeah, we've done a few. We did one up in Platte City recently, and it was a playground splash pad. It was a little bit more bigger, because they had bathroom houses and things like that. Mike's aware of the Aquatic Center in Topeka, and the, but with that was two parts. They did a splash pad by Highland Park High School, so that was part of it, and those were the two that I've done here, where you, you know.
And Reid and I have been by the one in Platte City, it's pretty nice.
Yeah. So that was an old, that was an old school site, the Torrey House School, so the city and school district worked out something, and their plan is maybe a future aquatic center. So there was some design that went into it to help with planning for the future of it, too, so.
And were those circulating or non-circulating?
Um, I believe the one in, or, the one in Topeka, I think was circulating, because we had a pump house. The one in Platte City, I think it's freshwater, but we set it up to where, when the pool's built, they could re-pipe it, put some valves in it so they could tie it in and recirculate it, and just have one maintenance type thing.
As you go through this process, as you go through the two processes, I want you not to think about today, but I want you to think about 10, 15, 25 years. I just got through reading an article about the aquifer in Kansas. Now, that affects us, but it does not affect us. We actually get our water through two reservoirs, through the insurance district, and there has been, rainfall has been below the minimum the past several years, and the problem that reservoirs are fighting, in addition to drought, which you've seen out west, is a silting in of, of the reservoirs. So I just, as you're going through this process, and you think about what type you want, I really want you to also think about the conservation that is, that is needed, that's going to be needed in the future.
I'm really glad that you brought that up, because the League of Kansas Municipalities is actually, I'm working on a, a policy statement regarding wastewater, or regarding water, wastewater, all water, and the critical nature of it. I think that we may not be feeling the pressure here yet, but we will. And it's coming quicker than I think we all realize. And so although it does cost additional monies, we're not passing it on to generation after generation by just utilizing the water and not using it smartly. So just a thought, but that, yeah, there's going to be, you're, you're going to start to see a conversation. I think it's been had really strongly in the western part of Kansas for quite some time. You are going to start seeing it on the eastern side of Kansas, and it's going to start, the voices are going to start getting louder, and so conversation to be had.
Well, is it the alternative of the kids following the city cruiser around with fire hydrants when they drive?
That's still fun.
That still's the best.
That's still fun.
That's still the best.
It's still fun.
Oh, yeah. And adults are allowed on it? Yeah, okay.
Asking for.
For someone else. That's what also is a good thing about us, right? We had that they are ADA accessible, that typically, another expense thing is, you can do like a hard plastic, or you can do a brush concrete, where it's going to be good for, you know, a long time, but it's also ADA accessible. There's really, you know, it's one flat surface, so wheelchair, you know, anything like that that it's not, yeah, so try to keep it that way.
I think, too, I, I did ask the League to get together a list of cities that have splash pads, and to have a conversation with that, so that we, if we're going to the League conference, you can have those conversations with some of those cities. I mean, there's some small cities that are actually have, have functioning splash pads right now, and so I think it would be good for us as commissioners to have a conversation with our counterparts in other cities and say, how did you do it? How did it work for you? What were the downfalls, and what can we learn from that, and what do you wish you would have done differently? So a conversation that certainly can be had, so I hope to have that with you soon.
Do you look for approval from the commission today for the agreement?
I'll just, well, I'll just, just maybe a nod that this is where you want to go, and I'll get the agreement taken.
Commissioners, can we at least give him a nod?
And Casey has been invaluable, and one of the reasons I, I really went to Casey with this, and I want to use Casey, he knows the community, as you know. Casey grew up here. Casey was the kid his mother put him on the bicycle, maybe sometimes, if he didn't have to cross traffic, but he knows the community.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, yes. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and please don't hesitate to reach out, uh, with any questions, especially I'd love to hear feedback. If you guys get any feedback from other communities about pitfalls or things that worked out amazing, that's the best, best way to learn. Um, we will take that into account. I think, um, I'm sure Richard will have us come back. To the commission prior to finalizing anything or sending anything out to bid. Um, or, you know, probably a, a memo, some sort of what our plan is, uh, once we did, once we decide on that, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Levi, thank you for your words of wisdom. I'll move us on to item three, which is a moderate income housing project proposal discussion. Director Hall, how are you?
Good. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, this is before you again for discussion, moderate income housing proposals, uh, possibly selection. Um, where we're at on schedule is, uh, Susan Galmore with Southeast, uh, Kansas Regional Planning Commission. She's actually on Zoom right now in the meeting. Uh, she does need some time to put together a good application to submit by the September thirty deadline. If you were to make a selection tonight, we would bring a resolution back to you. The application requires a resolution of support and a capacity statement. So I'm going to spare you the PowerPoint presentation unless you want to see some slides. Uh, they're available if you want to look at anything in particular. Uh, recall that we received three proposals. And one of those proposals included four projects by Heartland Design Build, also known as Joseph Thomas. And, uh, our recommendation was to, uh, select three of those projects. Two by Heartland Design Build, Project A and Project B. Project A is a duplex, a townhouse style duplex, uh, Ninth and Walnut. Uh, Project B is four single family dwellings, uh, the former Lincoln School Site at Cedar and Red Jacket. And then also, uh, the recommendation was to include, uh, the Prairie Fire Proposal, also known as Prairie View Estates Phase Two. And that's seven duplexes for fourteen units. It's a continuation of the, of the Prairie, uh, Fire Prairie US Estates project that was, uh, started back in twenty seventeen. The reason we selected those is because we think they're most shovel-ready. Uh, they're good projects. They meet the objectives. Uh, they meet the workforce housing objectives, uh, as part of the program and, uh, uh, priority for the city of Ottawa. There is another project that, that's a, a very attractive project, a thirty-two unit apartment project, uh, by Pinnacle Component Systems at Wilson and Davis. And our primary reason for not recommending that was because we don't believe it's shovel-ready. It needs, that requires rezoning. Um, requires the establishment of a rural housing incentive district, quite a bit of work to do there. Uh, all the projects that we received are good projects, but you have to make a selection. And, uh, your total request in your application cannot exceed six hundred and fifty thousand. And so the projects together, they're below that now. Uh, it provides some wiggle room for some other things, uh, that are needed. And so, uh, if you have specific questions you have of me, I'd be happy to answer those if there's more information you'd like. I'd be happy to try to answer those questions. Um, but, uh, that's. Whatever you'd like me to do tonight to help you, uh, go through this.
What is the total of the projects that are recommended?
Total of projects is, uh, six hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so one of our costs is the administration of the, of the grant funds. And we have a contract with, uh, with Susan Galmore's, uh, organization. For administration, post-award, and that's fifteen thousand, so that would, that would be included in that.
In addition to the six hundred and twenty?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
And some of the things we're looking at in the final is that, um, on our past MIHs, we've done things like, um. As an incentive, um, given a discount on building permits because of the nature of the bill. And, um, I, I actually was reviewing this with Mike today, and we will likely do some of, and you'll see all this. In the final application if we get there. Um, we'll, we'll do that, and there's also, I've had Mike kind of estimate what the cost of perhaps staff's. Administration is, and that will be a contribution to the project, so we're going to do. What we can do to help move these projects along.
I'd really like this, the pinnacle one. I agree with, like, with thirty-two units. I mean, that's a big thing and it's a big project. But at the same time, like you said, it needs to be ready. There's a few steps that the other projects are ahead and we game on versus this one. But this one could be one, like we've said, could be presented in the second round if there's money available.
It, it can, yes, it can.
And get these things at, if you're ready.
I think what's important, um, just reading the, their RFP, is that their zoning is in place? Or we have an application for rezoning? I think it'd be better if it's in place, uh, before you're asked to make a decision on it.
Have they purchased the property yet, or are they still?
It's under contract. Yeah.
Do you know, um, you made off the top of your head, I know the rents were lower on the Pinnacle system, how close that is to low-income housing prices? Or what that, what the threshold is that basically transitions from low income to moderate income?
So, so low income typically is considered, um, sixty percent or below sixty percent of, of, uh, median area income. Um, a lot of housing grants go up to eighty percent, or for housing that's at eighty percent. Modern income housing is considered, uh, between sixty and a hundred and fifty percent. I can just speak generally. I can look at this more closely, but generally, uh, these are between eighty and a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent, depending how you calculate it. It's based on what's affordable to a, a household with that income, with a certain number of residents in the household. Uh, and also, uh, paying no more than thirty percent of their gross income in housing.
I appreciate that we've had, um, multiple times to have a conversation regarding, um, this. Um, I do also respect that, um, Ms. Galmore has, um, the timeline that she has to meet and. Not putting her under pressure probably doesn't help. I mean, putting her under pressure probably doesn't allow her to do her best work, but she wouldn't do great work, but. Um, and if we can give her more, um, time to do work, I think we should, uh, good work, I think we should do that. Um, I may want to note that, um, on Friday I met with, uh, I don't know, Thursday and Friday, met with. Um, close to twenty other cities across the state of Kansas, and this was a topic of conversation with almost every one of them. So, um, and the wide breadth of what they're going to apply for. Is, is expansive. Um, so I don't, I'd like to see us just make a decision and move forward. So that, um, Susan has time to put pen to paper and really do her very best work for us on this application.
Thank you. If I could just add, uh, if, when you do make a selection, what, what should happen is, is tell us what your preferences are. This is the top project, um. I don't know if you want to rank them, but I, something like that as part of your application.
And is it, um. Do you agree if they made a selection today, we could virtually have the formal application for them? To consider at the September twenty-first commission meeting?
That's probably a question for Susan. Uh, what we need to have for, at the September twenty-first is probably the resolution for you to adopt. Right, but I, I, and Susan's participate now.
Okay, why don't we check on that, because I think in all fairness, the commission needs to see the full application also.
Okay.
Before we send it off, and the deadline is what, September thirtieth?
Yes.
And if we have to, I'm relatively certain we could have a special meeting, maybe even Fiji. And Susan's online, so.
Well, Commissioners, how would you like to? Move forward? Would you like to rank them one through three, and then we see how the numbers add up? Will you tell me what you'd like to do?
Are you considering one through three as in, one through three companies?
No, it will. So what I was looking at is the Prairie Fire project, the two projects from Heartland, and then Pinnacle. Those three.
And remind me the, the letter, um, the, on the Heartland Design, Project A, B, C, or D, which one?
A and B.
A and B, sorry, just wanted to make sure I had it right.
C is the project in Westwood, the four houses in Westwood, that's what's her thing.
So we would combine projects A and B together, or we, because we've had this conversation on, do we mine or do we dump? Do we, or do we not?
What would you suggest?
Well, I, I think that it's possible, um, I'm not sure if there's an advantage to combining any of them.
Right.
Into a single project, uh, and maybe Susan has a, another, some insight on that, and she's, she's in the meeting, so you could ask her that question.
Susan, can you help us with that?
Well, I apologize. Can you repeat the question? I was looking at my calendar.
So for the Heartland project, there's a, there's an A and a B. Is there any benefit to combining those two? Or not combining them if we were to push them forward for approval?
I would probably recommend not combining them. Um, if you combine them and KHRC decides. They want to downsize your project somehow, then you have a chance of losing both A and B. Uh, if they're kept separate, then maybe they'll just pick. One of those to downsize. I'm not saying they'll do that, but they do have the option to do that. And there are different projects. One, if I remember right, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have it here in front of me, but I think one was. Family housing and one was duplexes.
Is A the duplexes?
Project A is a townhouse design style duplex with parking and detached garages off of an alley. And Project B is four single-family detached homes, and there, I believe there are two different sizes to those. Two are three, three-bed, two-bath, and two are. Two bed, two bath.
Susan, does it make a difference, like, how many doors we're talking about on projects?
No, it doesn't, uh, not at this level. Um, the reason why A and B. Don't nicely go together as one is just simply because one will go in one category, which is single-family housing, and one will go into another category, which is multifamily housing. And it's just, um, easier application-wise too, if they're kept separate in the description phase as well, so. You can combine them if you want, but I don't know what advantages you have to do that.
So Commissioners, hearing that, just a quick question on that, would you prefer to keep them separate or combining? Okay, so if you guys don't mind, Joseph, which one would you prefer if we were to approve one of them to put above the other? If we were going to keep them separate?
I think the one in Lincoln's probably the, uh, greatest impacts, and I think also the, the history, like, there's a really similar project in Pittsburgh. It's like their marquee project that when you pull up the moderate income housing grant, it's specifically the redevelopment and, uh, of, of an old elementary school site. With ten single-family homes to provide that type of housing, because, you know, we're, I don't know if this is going to play into what this, the state looks at, but. You know, the last study session, you, you had approved like a, you know, a memo understanding for the project that Josh Walker's leading, you know, and that's going to be. A bunch of one and two-bedroom units, and then I don't know what, the state's also approved seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a low-income housing tax credit for. Another apartment development on the south side of town. I don't know what that means as far as the, um, housing inventory in Ottawa, but. I would just think if they're looking at that from a global level, that, uh, you know, it might be pushed to look for a little. Larger size, family-level housing, um, because they're going to see that the Department of Commerce has already put up. Big chunk of money towards one and two-bedroom units, uh, multifamily, and then also there's a low-income housing tax credit. A project, and I don't know specifics about that project, but that's all a bunch of, you know, it's a bunch of three-bedroom units, so maybe that changes the thesis, but. I'm guessing it's more kind of a lot of typical one and two, like a lot of apartment buildings are, because I understand that's an apartment project, so. So I'd, you know, answer your question, I'd say the, the Lincoln School for single-family projects.
Which Commissioners would be?
B.
Yeah.
Letter B.
Okay.
It's being eight thousand dollars attached to.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? So how would you like to move forward? Trying to rank them one through three, you just want to, uh.
Let's do that.
Mr. Clayton, go first, please.
On those, I would definitely say of the two from Heartland, um, B, the Lincoln Lot would be my primary one. As we're trying to, this is specifically geared kind of towards moderate income workforce housing. I see that fitting what's currently on the existing Lincoln Lot, all the kind of homes that are there. Um, A is a great project, also with its proximity to OU. I can see it being. Used for college student housing, which is terrific, and we need that, but within this grant, I would think B would be a priority. For me personally, of those two projects, of those two, so I would almost rank it, you know, B, A, and then the, um. The Phase Two, um.
Are you, are you scribing?
Yeah, yeah, I'm keeping. If you don't, if you don't remember, I'm going to recuse myself because of my conflict, so I'm just being the, the numbers person at this point, and. Melanie, you can check me if, uh, if I'm wrong. Okay, great. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore.
I guess I would like, you know, Heartland B as, uh, over the A, but I think I'd rather go with the, uh, Prairie Fires as number two. And then go back to maybe Part A as the third.
I would agree with that, sorry, I probably missed, got excited speaking, but that would make more sense too. Changing minds, sorry. For your, your scribing.
Yeah, Commissioner agrees?
Okay, mine's going to be the difference. That's why there's so many of us. I'm going to go with the Prairie View as one, and then B then A.
Commissioner?
Say it again.
I, I, I said, um, the Prairie View Estates, the fourteen, or the seven duplexes as my one, and then B and then A.
I like that better myself, too. I'm, I'm.
Hold on, I mean, I'm only decent.
Why don't you should have started over on this side first, is what we're trying to tell you.
Knew I should have started with the ladies. Okay, so, Mike, did you say Prairie View first? I was going to, and then I thought, man, the markers didn't work last time, this could be confusing, and then. Mike, did you say, uh, Prairie View, and then, yeah, and then the B? So you three are all in agreement, correct? Okay. Okay, well, I mean, it's, it looks to me like, I think overall, Prairie View will be our number one. The B project would be number two.
I think you want to make it Prairie Fire, right? Is it Prairie Fire?
Well, you've said both.
It says Prairie View, but then it's like.
MIH partners.
MIH Audible Partners.
And none of us voted for that, so there you go. The one, then the other one, and then the other one, do that.
Yes.
There tends to be, there's a tendency with projects, each project has at least two names, maybe three or four.
Prairie View slash Estate slash MIH Partners, one, uh, Heartland B, two, Heartland A, three.
We'd love it if we could get it all. I, I mean, there's certainly value in all of it, just, I'm thinking of the. Long-term preferences.
And I.
The most worth tops.
I'm excited too, just for the disclosure, uh, Rudy could go somewhere, other bank to get this financing. I just wrote a letter of recommendation for his benefits. And so I'm not the lender necessarily, it could be, but maybe not, because he's got choices, he can go. I'm not the lender necessarily, it could be, but maybe not, because he's got choices, he can go anywhere.
Well, I think there's a lot of interest, as Mayor Protem Skidmore mentioned earlier, in the Pinnacle project also. Not that we weren't interested, I think there's just some skepticism, just because the purchase hasn't been done, and then there's that rezoning. Certainly, if the MIH second round comes up in four months and they're ready, I, we would love this, I would love to see that project for sure.
Good, thank you. Is there anything else we need to add?
I don't think, I don't think so, unless it would be if Susan heard our conversation on putting the application, application together, and what input she might have on when that might be ready for the Commission to look at.
So I can probably have most of it done. There are pieces of it that I'm needing gather from other parties, the developers, and some of your, your business people, and now that we have a project to discuss, I can start working on developing that information. So assuming all of the pieces fall into place, I should be able to, if, if nothing else, I should be able to at least piece done, but if I'm still waiting for information, pieces of information from a developer, and it's not anything that impacts the numbers or anything like that, it's a lot of the background information, you have to get like resumes and prospectuses and all that stuff. That stuff I don't, I can't promise you, because I'm not the person that puts that together, I rely on them to provide it to me. So there could be just some outlying pieces that I might still be gathering, but the body of it could be done, if that would work.
Yeah, and I would rather get this done right than press towards a deadline. I think you all would be all right that last week of September, having a special meeting to at least review what you have, would that work? Does that help you, Susan?
Yeah, no, that would be great. What I can do is, do you have a meet, a scheduled meeting on the 21st?
We do. We have a meeting on that.
Also kind of see where I'm at by then, and I can give you what I have if you want, if, and kind of know what pieces are still outstanding, and maybe there are things that matter to you, and they, or they don't, I don't know, but yeah, I can shoot for the 21st, and if all else fell about last week.
Thank you, thank you for helping us out.
Sure, I'm excited to, that you were able to make a decision in such a short timeframe, I know that you guys had a hard decision to make, so this is very helpful, though, to let us move forward with now doing our outreach to the people we need to get feedback from.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Director Hall.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us on to item four, which is ordinance authorizing storm sewer improvements. Tyler is, is, good afternoon, Tyler.
Still waiting on our month.
That's right. That's right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, how are you all?
Well, the next three items on your agenda actually are pretty closely related. So the ordinance authorizing the storm sewer improvements, item five, the resolution authorizing public building improvements, and item six, the resolution authorizing the public sale of general population bonds. This is all kind of part of the same presentation, and so if it works for you all, we probably want to discuss all these three items together. I've been working with Melanie, Dave Arberry, and other city staff to put this, this proposed 2022A refunding and improvement bond issue together, and so these items each relate to the bond issue in one way or another. So I'm happy to walk through each one of these items. Before I dive in here, Melanie, is there any background that you want to provide on this, or anything that we should touch on before I get into this specific, the items?
I think I'm just going to join up here, in case you have questions. I think just related to the building improvements, we had talked about that before, and I have a little more in-depth detail of what those might include, if you want to discuss those further, or if we get to that item. And then also, if you can expand, Tyler, a little bit on what the excess proceeds might be used for, for this stormwater project.
Absolutely, absolutely. Probably the thing to do is to run through what each of these, the ordinance and the two resolutions do, just from a high-level perspective, and then I actually have to duck out here, but Melanie and Dave can continue the discussion of how the bond issue is structured, and in particular, a discussion of the refunding component of the bond here. But so to touch on each of the three agenda items, the first item is an ordinance authorizing storm sewer improvements, and authorizing bond financing for the sewer improvements. The primary project here is a storm sewer system improvement along Cedar Street between 13th and 15th Streets. But if there are excess proceeds in that project after the Cedar Street project is complete, then the ordinance is set up describing the project, so that those additional proceeds can be used to improve another part of the storm sewer system. It's an area known as Skunk Run, and I'll, I'll leave it to Dennis and others to describe the background there, if there's a backstory, but that's, that's what the ordinance does, is authorize bond financing for storm sewer improvements. The, the second, go ahead.
And I might just throw in there that typically if there was excess proceeds, you would either have to apply those back towards future debt payments, and, or you can put them towards a project if it's defined upfront. And that's the whole purpose of putting it in here, is if there are excess proceeds, you can use it for this. We're not anticipating that there will be, but if there were, you don't want to, you'd like to be able to use them to your advantage, and continue on with other projects that have already been identified. So if that's helpful at all.
No, that's exactly right. We, we described improvements that way to, to build that flexibility in. And in kind of a similar fashion, the second agenda item here is a resolution authorizing these public building improvements. And part of the reason that we've set them up to authorize bond financing for all these different projects under a single resolution is so that you have the flexibility to move dollars from one project to another, again, without having to come back and modify the bond issue or modify any proceedings. If the flood mitigation improvements at the law enforcement center, you know, come in under budget, but there are additional improvements to City Hall that you'd like to make, all within that dollar amount in the resolution, then staff can work with whoever's performing the construction work and shift those dollars around without having to come back to you for additional authority. That's the same approach we took in the authorizing the, the building improvements. Melanie, anything to add to that?
On the building improvements, we summarized them in the memo for you, but we did break out, I do, I do have broken up for you some estimates for the different portions for City Hall, and also want some feedback from you on the auditorium piece. So for the auditorium, we included in here $200,000 for the replacement of the seating. We do know that we need to replace the carpeting, and the prime time to do that is when the seats are removed and before they are placed. We don't have an estimate for that yet, and we are working on that. But we anticipate that this would be the best time to do that. We can do two things to include that. Once we get that estimate, we can either find other financing or other funds for the commission renovation, which at one point you had discussed possibly using ARPA funding instead of financing that. Also, if there are any savings from any of these other projects, or we would get further estimates, better defined estimates, we can come back and try to refine how that might look. We can also use, there's a small portion of reserve that we placed into the budget for auditorium for next year. So I think there's a variety of ways we can get that done, but getting that estimate is key to that. The other thing you would ask for was, what does the security renovation to the second floor of City Hall look like? And we did go back and have our city engineer work with city staff to try and design what that might look like, and we have a new cost estimate for that, that is about $230,000. We still kept the original, our original estimate of $2,250,000 in total. The reality is, we probably could use more for all of these projects, but we also are trying to keep ourselves within a, a relatively easily funded payment for the long-term, over 10 years, from the debt service fund, without having to necessarily increase that mill rate over time and planning it against other projects that might also have to come out of there. So it, it's really a balancing act, but what we've provided you here is the best estimate we have at this point, and then we can prioritize or redefine what those projects look like later. If you're okay with moving ahead with using that amount, if you want to increase that amount, we can, we'll need to do that as we move into the next steps of this process.
At least 20-year bonds?
10-year. We want to make sure we're not exceeding the useful life of any of the improvements.
And these are both the balcony and the floor seats at OMA?
Yes.
Which I believe the last time they were replaced was 40 years ago? 45 years ago, which was a major renovation, I believe, done by Boyd Booth.
Have you reached out for carpeting quotes?
Yes, she's waiting on it. I'll report back.
Because I, I absolutely agree, and I think if we're going to have the seats taken out, we might as well do the carpet. And I think it'd be a nuisance to do it later.
Yes.
These would be bank-qualified, I assume, on the bonds, and therefore the rate would be lower. Any idea on the rates, either? Tyler?
I will defer to Dave on that. These will be bank-qualified, so yes.
Any idea?
Yeah, just a second here, let me pull up some numbers that I was running just a few minutes ago, hold on.
And then I saw, while you're looking that up, and we're refinancing some debt, too, is that the next topic?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Yeah, right now, I would anticipate the rates would probably be just a shade under 3% for, for the 10-year issue.
And that's up from six months ago?
Oh my gosh, yeah. I, I, I've got a little graph here pulled up that I was looking at just before this call, and rates are up since the beginning of the year about 1.75%. So had you been selling this right at the beginning of the year, you'd probably be looking at something.
Thank you.
Before we jump into the rest of the discussion, do you have any other questions for Tyler? I know he needs to jump off of the call. Dave, I mean, Dave and I can handle any other questions, yeah. Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you, Tyler.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, so I guess we can continue. Dave, do you want to continue talking about our refinancing?
Sure, sure. Yeah. Basically, in addition to funding for, for the new improvements, we've also tentatively included in the bond issue funds to refinance portions of the city's 2009A and 2014A bonds. Both of those bond issues become callable on October 1 of this year, and both of them contain, have interest rates on it that are above what the going-market rates are. Right now, we expect the entire issue size to be about $4.99 million. Of that, about 1.9 would be for the refinancing component. There's not a ton of savings associated with the refinancing. Right now, I, I estimate that we could probably save somewhere in the neighborhood of about $42,000 through the, through the refinancing. One thing that we do want to discuss, though, is setting a, a, a minimum savings target. Given how much interest rates have increased and how volatile the market is, I, I want to make sure that we sort of have some clear guidance from the Commission as to what you're looking for in terms of savings. And then as we approach the sale of the bonds, i-if it's clear that we can achieve those savings, we'll, we'll proceed with the refinancing, but if we can't, then what we would do is remove the refinancing from the issue and just proceed with selling bonds for, for the new projects.
I think when we first talked about this initially, we were thinking that we might see a savings of somewhere around $75,000 even, and it's dropped that much. And so to continue moving ahead, obviously, any savings is a savings, and that's helpful, there's eight years left on the bond issue after this point. We can continue that, that level, maybe $30,000, it might be $35,000. At any rate, the other two projects that are in this bond issue are our own projects anyway, so it's not like we're splitting financing costs with anyone, we're just breaking it across our own city projects. I think the savings of his estimated $42,000 right now was about. I want to say in the water fund, it was somewhere around $7,000 spread over eight years. And so if you're talking about the impact, it's not much, but again, a savings is a savings. If you don't refinance them now, there likely won't be an opportunity to refinance them in the future, as those rates likely won't go down. Or if they do, you'll have such a short amount of time left to pay on the bonds, the impact won't be, won't be large, so. Dave, did I represent that right?
Yeah, you did. To, to be more specific about the savings, of that $42,000, Melanie, I sort of did a seat-of-the-pants estimate of how much would accrue to, to different sources of repayment, and the water fund was about $15,000. The general debt service fund, by, you know, property taxes at large is about $24,000, and then the special highway fund was about $3,000. So if you decide with, to proceed with the savings target of something less than that, then the savings, I think, would probably drop proportionally.
But it also went on south, how long we're paying on this eight-year debt, right, or does it stay at eight years?
No, it stays. The original payment date is 2030, we would leave that in place. We're not extending any debt, we're only trying to capture savings in the form of interest.
So if we were to say $30,000, is that a pretty good floor, Dave?
I, I think that's reasonable, and Melanie, we're talking $30,000, $35,000. It, it, you know, money, as she was mentioning, it's, it's, it's real savings to, to the taxpayers, but it is spread out over a number of years, over a number of different funds, so I think $30,000 seems reasonable to me.
Why $30,000, Commissioner, if I can ask?
Well, I just was thinking somewhere, I'm guessing, let's go a little bit below 42, only because of $30,000, just $30,000 savings, I don't know if it gets below that much, if it's worth while or not, but I could entertain another number.
I thought there was some magic, no, no.
Same in all finances, just fix them later.
I want to be clear that there is, that's $30,000 total savings after the cost of this whole process of issuing bonds, because it's not free to do that.
Right.
And there is some cost to the city to do so.
Correct, so the 42 estimate is after all costs. Yes, correct, Dave?
Yes, that, yeah, that is correct.
Commissioners, how do you feel about Mayor Protem Skidmore suggesting a $30,000? Being our floor?
I would agree with it, I think at some point, I'm sure it's lower than that, but the cost would outweigh the benefit of and just the risk of pushing it out even longer, you know, I, I don't know, I think, I think $30,000 would be fair.
I think it's, yeah, a fair number.
If things change drastically, Dave, we saw the opportunity to change that number for a short while here now, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've, the, the sale of the bonds isn't scheduled until the 18th of October. So if something dramatic should happen between now and then, we can always revisit it. The, that $30,000 number, that's the number that you're good with, that will be put into the resolution that you would be, consider adopting at your meeting, what, a week from Wednesday? But that, that's not etched in stone, if something should happen, you could still change it between then and when the, the bond issue sells in October.
So some people might say, why not lower it all the way to $10,000, we're saving 10, what's, what's the argument there?
You know, I, I think that they would have a good point, I mean, it, it is $10,000 of savings, but you know, I don't know as though, if you spread that over all the different funds over the remaining eight years, is it necessarily going to be impactful? There, there's costs associated with, you know, time and effort to, to. There's costs associated with, you know, time and effort to respread all of these costs and stuff that is staff time that's real too.
Yeah.
Give me an input on that? What you just asked? I mean, my elementary math, if we dropped it to 10,000, you know, incrementally took it out of, let's say, special funds, that's $1,000 we'd save over eight years, which is $125 savings over the next eight years. I, I mean, it's still a savings. We're still talking about that. It's still a savings. But as Mr. Otterberg stated, you know, it might not be worth, you know, the time to have to implement all that.
I think, so your cost of issuance is based on your total financing package and your total number. So spread across the projects as well. There's probably a magic point there. Dave, I don't know exactly what that magic point is, whereas that cost lowers to the point where it makes the most sense. I, in the end, it's not like there are special assessments that are being, you know, savings and having to respread those assessments. There's none of that extra there that has to happen. So in this case, I guess I really don't have an opinion as to what that floor might be. And you're right, as long as it's a savings, it's a savings. I don't know that there's any downside to the sale price, Dave, unless you have input on that.
No, I would agree. You know, I think the, in the municipal bond industry, there's this concept of present value savings. And a minimum acceptable level of present value savings associated with the refinancing, a lot of cases will be somewhere in the 2% to 5% amount. In other words, if the present value of the savings is 2% to 5% of the amount you're refinancing, then it's worth proceeding. In this case, that $30,000 figure does pretty closely equate to that 2% threshold. So I think that that's kind of a rationale for that 2% or that $30,000 number. Having said that, though, I think that assumes that there might be an opportunity in the future to refinance, to get more than that 2%. In this case, I don't know as though there's going to be an opportunity to refinance unless rates go down pretty dramatically, pretty quickly.
Commissioner Kayler, how do you feel about that $30,000 floor?
I'm fine with 30. I'm fine with 20.
After hearing the other information that we just discussed it, could you like to stay at 30, commissioners, or would you like to drop in some more?
I'm buying seeing it 30.
I might split the difference with Commissioner Kayler.
I think I'm fine going to 20, and we can always face that decision later and make that decision when that point comes, if it comes down at 22, but at least it gives us a floor.
I guess if I'm looking at a taxpayer, which we're all taxpayers here too, in the face, and I have to say, well, you know, we really decided 30 was the, $30,000. What about 20? I guess I could, I'm willing to, I can't make a solid argument about why 30 is better than 20. And so savings is savings.
I think I'd be okay with the 20 also. I think if that's the case, we, you know, are we okay with being that low, commissioners?
I'd be okay with it. I would hate to go any lower and worry about staff time and all the costs that are going to go into it beyond that point.
I think we've agreed at 20,000 is our floor then.
Okay, I'll have Tyler incorporate that number into the resolution for consideration at your meeting next week. The only other thing I just wanted to touch on real quickly is the timing of this. And I think in your agenda packages, there was mention of these. If things stay on schedule, you'd adopt these resolutions and ordinances at your meeting on the 21st. The sale would occur on the 18th of October. Between now and then, we would complete the disclosure documents. We would advertise for the sale of the bonds. We would do the due diligence and get the rating. We've already got a rating call scheduled for September 29th. Then the sale would be conducted on the 18th of October, and we'd return then to you at your meeting on the 19th with the results of the offering. Assuming everything went smoothly, the closing of the issue would then occur about November 17th. And that's when you'd get the funds for your new projects, and that's when the old bonds would get paid off.
Commissioners. Just back to the public building number. Are you comfortable with the number we've thrown in here and the projects that we're proposing? Because there is language inside of those, that resolution that indicates that those are the projects that we're going to complete. It doesn't necessarily give the amount per project, but those are the ones that are identified.
So it can be some flexibility on that. If we needed something else we decided rather than the permission remodel or something like that, or is that?
I believe that it specifically says in here that for City Hall, it is improvements to the HVAC system, the commission chambers, and secured entry to the second floor.
Do we have to be that specific?
We could probably, no, I don't think we have to be. I think we have to give the, I think we have to give a fairly good description of what the project is going to be. You can't leave it just wide open. We could probably work out that.
While you have been presenting, I was doing some search. And in the time I've been on the city commission, we have allocated funds to our reserve fund for the HVAC, I mean, HVAC AC system has been a discussion since 2012. And so I'm concerned about where is that money gone that we've, that we've budgeted for the reserve system? And where did that go and for HVAC? Probably to look at that. Yeah.
We've talked about it a lot, but there's been some budget line items for repairs, but I don't know that we've ever got serious and have done a reserve in the sense of a reserve.
There's not a reserve right now for that. There was a study done last year, the beginning of last year, maybe. And that's where we got these numbers from. We picked out of that scope what the items might be, and that's how we came up with the $1,001,000. That study was done, but there isn't, there's not a specific reserve set aside or funding.
That was the first time we actually did a study on replacement of the entire system.
The skunk run improvements, that was part of our, we also included that in, wasn't it, ARPA discussion also?
We did. And in fact, at that time, we were unsure, unclear of exactly where those improvements might need to take place on skunk run. That is a fairly large, extensive project with different segments of skunk run that need to be done. Director Tharp and I picked out a section that might be able to easily be completed with a small amount of funds that might be available. And only because we know that there was a contingency built into Cedar Street project that we were unsure of exactly where we were going to land on that. So that's why we selected that small section between Fifth and Seventh on Sorry, thank you, thank you. But that's not the full project. It's only a very small section within that entire project.
So remember, if I remember correctly, the ARPA discussion was off roughly $400,000?
I think so. I think it was around that.
And so.
Yeah, and this, I mean, I threw out the scenario to Director Tharp, but if there's 50,000 left, where would you use that on that project? Or where else could it be used? And it can only be used on stormwater improvements. So that's why I asked him to select a specific project that it could be used on.
And so that City Hall, I agree, HVAC needs to be replaced. And then I agree with securing the second floor. I guess I'm still kind of on chamber, commission chambers only because it's, I guess in some ways it's more of a want than a need. We already have one right now, and it's, I know it's not conducive for discussion because we're all in a line. We can't face each other like we do in here. I understand that, but I'm a little hesitant on that. Do you have the estimate on what that was going to cost out of that total?
Our initial estimate was 200,000, yes, 200,000.
For a chamber, and that was going to also remove this wall? Tell me what all that was going to include.
Yes, so it's an expansion of the commission chambers to include this room and some improvements along the way, both of the IT section and the ability to close off this area for separate meetings, should that need to be had. And then also redesign of the front area so that it could be used for study session and regular commission meetings all in one space.
But there was a modernization of the IT. I mean, we're utilizing the same, the same system that we've been using the entire time I've been here. And so those numbers.
There was also a component in there for security. You have only one way out of here. You have only one way out of these rooms. If something happens, but we've talked about it for years, you don't have another way out.
And we did talk initially about using the ARPA funding for that piece, which is still an option. I mean, we can do that too. We can combine that with, you know, segment this piece out and use those funds and then take these remaining dollars and apply back towards, say, the auditorium carpeting project or however we would want to do that. Now, by including it in the description does not mean it has to happen. By not including it in the description, it's going to be a lot tougher to actually do that, a new, a new project that might come up. So we'd rather make sure it's more expansive, include more things than you might actually be able to accomplish with those dollars to give you more opportunity. And we can always circle it back around to that, as long as you are okay with the description that's in there for now.
Can you hear any other questions for Director Landis or Mr. Otterberg?
Okay, we do have this on your agenda for next Monday as well, so we can review again. We probably won't make any large changes other than the couple of things we've talked about. And then we would recommend it go on to your next regular agenda after that.
Do you expect a carpet quote by next Monday?
I don't have the answer to that. I'll double check.
Okay.
I guess, Mr. Otterberg, are we in a recession or going into one? And how deep will it be if we go into one? While you're on the clock.
Yeah. Don't answer it, Dave. Don't answer it.
Okay, good, good.
You got it, easy.
Don't answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you, David. I'll move us on to item seven, which is an update on the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks grant application to assist with the purchase of the Ottawa Golf Course and to receive public comments.
All right, commissioners, I hate it when this happens to you, but I don't know any other way to handle this. This is the application form that we, by we, I mean Melanie, Laura, Dennis, and Heather Morgan has helped us with putting this together. And the other Melanie on community development side has been helping with this. So we're about 80% there. This is due on Thursday, and we started to work in earnest on it when you, we had done some work beforehand anticipating that this might be needed. And we started working earnest, especially when you said, yes, we're going to acquire the golf course. And what this does is if we're funded, it will pay 50% of that, up to 50% of that acquisition. And right now, the total estimated cost is $308,800. $20,000 of that is because the service lines to the buildings are considered overhead lines, and a requirement is that we bury them. So Dennis estimated that's what it would cost. The rest of that is directly related to the acquisition cost. So if we are fortunate in being funded, we would receive $154,400 from, through this fund, which is administered by the state. These are federal dollars that flow through to the Kansas Wildlife and Parks. So I will make sure that you all get a completed application. There's lots of things we've had to take a wag. We've had to take a wild, I guess, at doing, including an annual budget, maintenance requirements for the next five years. We've stressed right now that there is an operational lease on the club, and we don't see that changing in the very near future, but we're in discussions about that. So I'm asking you on a leap of faith, at least say it's okay to get this submitted on on Thursday. And in anticipation of that, we had the mayor sign some forms today.
We always have the right to say no to the money if it comes through.
You do, you do.
Yeah, we can say no to the money.
You always do, but it's always a lot better to say the governing body approves submitting this loan, this request. And you can reject it. I know of a couple of communities that did reject.
Commissioners, you okay with the city manager, the application that we will be submitting hopefully Thursday?
It will be submitted. Yes. And by the way, our grant person is Heather Morgan. Some of you have met her. And she, in amongst her other duties, has worked, has really helped us put most of this together.
Not on games, there's K-State football. Not on those days. She doesn't work on.
I think you have the okay from the commission.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move us on to comments by our city manager.
I have no other comments for you.
Okay, comments by our city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
I always enjoy when I know my friends are watching and I get messages during the meetings. And this one is from Diana Sarsenek Dean from the Old Depot Museum. And she just wanted us to know that Skunk Run is responsible for 25% of the Typhoid cases in 1910. So just so everybody knows.
How many today?
I don't know. I didn't ask. I don't want to know.
How many today?
I just want to know, it is the elected officials that were held responsible for that.
Oh, okay.
We can celebrate zero in Typhoid today.
Right. We did our job. Yes, we did our job.
Commissioner Kayler?
None of this time.
Commissioner Clayton?
Just the announcement about there was a terrific showing. I went down to the antique tractor show. I don't know the exact name. The tractor show, and it was packed, and there was a lot of parking. And there was a lot of people utilizing the new sidewalks over in that area. The crosswalk, and that was terrific. And then I'm sure everyone knows the car shows this weekend, so.
Mayor Brokens, get me?
As you know, I plan to retire from the bank the end of the year. In my last four months, I'm going after the Gopert Foundation for lots of money. I think what can they do to me? The arm that signs my paycheck, it's also an arm I twist for money. And today I was successful in getting some money to get the caboose painted at our historic, historic train station. So that will be painted here in the next, hopefully, within a month. And there'll be other requests I'm going after too, so I'll probably leave my pants on fire, but I'm going to do all I can to get money for the community itself.
Great, perfect. Thank you. I'll move us on to the comments by our mayor. I just want to let you all in on, we have a joint meeting Friday. There's been some discussion amongst some of the governing bodies. It's not, it's only going to include at this point, we're trying to streamline a discussion for Proximity Park. There's been some questions on some incentives, some things that we might offer, some things we might not. And I think at this point, and we have up to this point, anytime a prospect has came in, there's been a group that's gotten together and started that incentive discussion. And then when it, if that prospect moved further along, then it kind of got to these governing bodies. What we're trying to do at this point is, since we think it's going to be more competitive now that Panasonic is moving up into Soto, and we might be able to get a satellite business down here, industry down here. industry down here, that we're trying to have a discussion so we can streamline some issues so that those can be passed forward to any possible prospects. So at this point, we're calling it a joint meeting, but it's only going to include the mayor, mayor pro tem, our city manager, possibly legal counsel, haven't had an answer from him yet. Are, put me on the spot, was it not yet?
I don't know if I was invited yet.
It will also include the county chair, the county vice chair, along with the county administrator. It'll include USD 290 superintendent, and then Paul being from FCDC. Commissioners, like I said, at this point, it's just a discussion to kind of narrow down some incentives. And then once, like I said, if that prospect moves further along, it'll certainly come in front of us. I will certainly pass, I'm sure that some of this information discussed will get passed to the commission. So if there are any concerns about anything that comes up, certainly, you know, pass those concerns on so that we can let them do.
Do we know where this will be, what time? Yeah, so.
I think it's at the school district.
So it's more of a testy?
Yeah.
Eight to five?
Five, yeah.
No, I think it's nine to 10:30.
Eight to five. Nine to 10:30?
Yeah. I have no other comments. That'll move us on to our announcements. We have our study session next Monday at 4:00 PM here, and then our regular meeting at 10:00 AM 21st. Anything else come forward, Commissioner, this evening?